Hi guys.
Hello Diane. Still eating supper Diane?
Trying.
My, uh, my remote from Rhode Island.
Are you working?
Working right now, yeah. So you see how hard?
Yeah. Hi Pete.
Hey, how are you guys?
Good, how are you?
So.
So how much? Yeah, alright. Good evening everyone, welcome to the planning and zoning commission. Today is March 17th and this is our regular meeting. And I do have an announcement before we start into the agenda. My name is John Beely and I happen to be the chairperson for the planning and zoning commission. This meeting may be attended in person or by video or telephone conference. The Zoom conference access information was provided for the commission members, applicants, and other interested persons to participate and they're just on a legal ad and agenda posted on the town website. For those attendant, I'm going to ask that you mute yourself if you're able to do so, so that we do not get any background noise. Also, two very important reminders. First, every time you speak, you must state your name and title for the record. Second, be careful not to speak over one another, so that everyone listening can hear what's being said and we have a record, a clear record. For this reason, it's necessary when it comes time for the commission members to comment or ask questions about a particular item, before any action is taken and then to vote again on that item. Maureen, Tuesday, our town planner, will call the role as needed. And congratulations on your recent appointment. Also, the regular meetings will be recorded and the recording will be posted on the town's website. And I'm now going to ask Maureen to take the role of report of attendance. John Michael O'Brien is absent. Diane Joycey?
Here.
Timothy Zigma?
There.
Ryan Rogan?
Here.
Sandra Coppola?
Here.
Scott Hamel?
Here.
Kevin Beely?
Here.
Peter Zarabozza?
Here.
Alternate Angela Lynn Mayne asked to be excused.
Okay.
And Steve Biella Jr.?
Here.
Okay. For this meeting, Peter, would you please be the seated member for John Michael O'Brien? However, when we get to the, uh, the shuttle now, or what's called the, uh,
Preserve.
The preserve, I'll ask that Steve Biella be the seated member as he was here for all the testimony participated in that particular item. Okay?
Yes, good.
Thank you guys. Thank you for being there. Alright, so first we have the review of the March 3rd minutes. Has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes? Are there any adjustments? Are there any corrections that we need?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, Ms. Joycey has the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, second by Mr. Rogan for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Scheduling of the public hearings. First item is a special permit application at Joey's place at AVA Services of Connecticut for this childcare and preschool learning center at 1261 Berlin Turnpike. The suggested date we have here, Maureen, is April 21st. Okay, we have a motion to move that to the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I think Mr. Rogan hands the motion, but do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you Ms. Joycey for the discussion on this matter. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Item B, proposal in amendment of Robert Rossi to amend section G12, special permit uses for automotive appearances, enhancement services used for automotives, motorcycles, and pickup trucks, but non-mechanical and non-sales. The suggested date you have here is also for April 21st. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Alright, Sandy Coppola, Ms. Coppola has the motion. Do we have a second though?
Second.
A second.
Second. The novel's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, bond reductions released is requested, Natalie, early for the bond release of $770 at 52 Willow Brook Drive. And what should we have, uh, this?
Jim Harble noted that it's okay to release the bond unless Maureen has other comments. I'll make a motion.
Well, go, go for it.
Uh, move to release the bond in the amount of $770 at 52 Willow Brook Drive.
What should I, Ms. Joycey? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll also make a motion to release the bond on item B on the agenda for the same party in the amount of $2,172 at 52 Willow Brook Drive.
Alright, we have a motion for combined by Ms. Joycey of item A and B. Saying that.
Second on both of them.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you Tim. So, thank you for you, we have a second, we have for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? So moved. Commission business, discussion of the buffer landscape plan of Priority Electric at 1865 Orchard Road. I just want to get my paperwork here.
The proposed plan was, um, distributed to everyone in their packages.
And, um, I do have, I can't pull up the site plan that was approved.
It's like, it's got a lot of other things on it, it's not a dedicated, um, landscape plan, but, uh, you may recall the applicant had, kind of who voted that they're permitted, et cetera. They then cleared what was noted as trees to remain along Orchard Road. And the commission took exception to that. And so we have, had asked them, sent an enforcement order and asked them to provide a landscape plan to restore the landscaping. I'm not sure if anyone's heard from Priority, but the, as a discussion item on this, um, we were handling, you know, it's really a staff item, um, that the replacement is to, uh, rather they took down the trees because of their age and condition and the utility wires is what their tree install, tree worker had told them. So now, after the enforcement order, they have proposed this plan for new landscaping along that area.
This Commissioner Zigma?
Yes, Tim, go ahead.
Yes, I see the, uh, new plantings in the front of the property. My concern was the area to the residential property, uh, which I don't see new plantings put in there. I went by there today. There's some big pines, uh, in sections of that, against that residential property, but not filled in because they took it all out, uh, in between some big pines. They took out all the stuff that was in between. My opinion is that that buffer between the, uh, the, on the residential property, that 50-foot buffer should have, uh, trees that are buffering the residential property.
Um, yeah, that's a point well taken Tim, because I was under the impression that they were going to leave that tree buffer and it was going to support their driveway there or their access in, out of the property. But it seems that when they cleared, they cleared everything. And it sort of left us a little bit, um, side blinded. But, um, yeah, we do have to address that side buffer as well. Yeah.
Can I talk about the side buffer a little bit?
Sure.
So this, this is the area, uh, that you're discussing now, I believe, along.
Yes.
This approved plan. And the approved plan showed that this would be, uh, additional planting to supplement that buffer and the grass with, like, we get earlier, uh, fencing, proposed fencing and curb to be maintained as moat law. So they were showing this, a new fence going in. This is the wood fence along the property line that, that remains. This being a new fence, or is that a new fence? No, that's the existing fence, I'm sorry. That's the existing fence. So the trees that they were supplementing were behind the, the existing fence that's there. The property line is actually on the other side of the fence over here.
Yeah, the, the, the trees that are shown here are existing, and one, two, three, four, and the ones up there a little bit. In between these trees, they cleared it out right to the fence.
From this side to the fence as well?
Between, between the, between the, the, the trees they have right there, one, two, three, four, right there where you're, you're, you are, curse of this, and the next row trees up, uh, in between there is cleared out right to the fence line or the property line.
And, and I guess that's what I was saying, that I thought they were, uh, having moat law in there, but it appears as though that's in this area from the fence to the north. I mistake.
But it, it, it does say proposed buffer plantings to supplement the existing buffer vegetation. And.
Yeah. Well, I, I think what was most important about this parcel is that it was, it's a business that's coming into town. It is on one side next to, you know, the Taylor rental, which is right off of, uh, it's on the Berlin Turnpike. And I do remember when we were in a public hearing for this particular matter, we stressed, or at least I remember mentioning to the applicant at the time, that this was a very important piece and we had to be very careful on how we did this, because it's a transitional piece to some old Victorian homes that had been existing in Berlin for a long time. And of course, they're really well maintained, but when they clear, I, I think it just really sets back. So they really do need to set this right. And one of the things that they did stress is that the buffer was going to remain to that fence. And that, you know, no, they were not going to touch it, but apparently they just went ahead and did it along with the full frontage. And I thought it was kind of interesting, it all happened like so quick, without the town being advised. It's not very nice though. But, I'm looking at the plantings they have now that are proposed, and I'm going to talk about the front of the building, so I'm going to shift gears a little bit. I see that they have, you know, some white spruce that are proposed in there. You know, I, I have difficulty with the white spruce because, uh, you know, they're all fast growing and they are thick and, uh, pretty consistent, but they get very, very tall and they can get gangly looking, yes?
I understand he's going to have to leave any of it.
Okay, alright, the applicant is, okay.
That helps at all.
Alright. So, what are you calling?
That's, that's your choice. I'm just, just surprised. Sorry about that.
Okay. You're gonna have to, yeah, lose your microphone, I'm sorry.
One thing I was saying about the screws, I, I get what you're saying with how to grow quickly and, uh, you know, kind of get a little gangly, but the good thing about it though is that we do still have some coverage of winter huts, where, you know, the other flights will be leaving early. I think if it's part of a mix, that could work.
Yeah. I think they have it proposed to be a cluster. It's going to be a cluster right in here. They're proposing, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, you have to move the cursor around. But the map that I have, it shows a cluster here in front.
At the driveway.
Yeah, at the driveway.
That's the cluster right.
Which may not be a good thing if we have a site plan problem. Uh, it depends on how far, far back they are, but they, the base can get pretty wide, unless there's some sort of magical dwarf series, series of those, you know, species that.
PDF of the.
Well, on the paperwork they submitted, um, shows the height, the max height of that old road.
Forty feet, it's not bad.
Other side.
I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to fall off.
I guess my point is, is that they're proposing, what, five of them?
Hi, this is Paul Pryor, I'm in the meeting.
Oh yes, hi. Good evening, Mr. Pryor, how are you today?
Good, thank you.
We're discussing your proposed landscape plan that you've submitted?
Yes.
For the frontage on Orchard Road. Also, we're concerned about the buffer that runs along the property line where the old Victorian homes start.
Okay.
So, uh, originally, I believe when we had the first meeting with you, it was agreed upon that that along the fence was going to stay. Um, and that that would serve as a green buffer, as well as the, the old fence that's in there, um, would also remain to help with the residents that are on that road. You know, of course, being sensitive to this being a transitional piece. Um, we're concerned that perhaps that whole buffer's been disrupted.
I don't, I don't believe so at all. I, I didn't take any trees out of there. That has been left, you know, as is. This Commissioner Zigma?
Yeah, go ahead Tim.
Yeah, the, the trees that are there, the one, two, three, four that you see right there in the beginning, they are there, they have been left there, but they have been trimmed up pretty high. Okay.
You know.
Got the stump going up and then the spread out higher than the fence. Uh.
I don't, I don't mean to interrupt, but, and, and again, I'm not a designer. But I think those trees, the one, two, three, four that you pointed to, those are new trees. If I'm not, I could be mistaken, but it says proposed buffer planting to supplement existing buffer vegetation.
Yes, yes sir, but the, the, uh, I went, drove by there today and there were some larger trees where those four, I don't know if it's not exactly four trees there. And then a gap, and then the, the, the trees in the back, which are, are there. But there's a gap in between there that, that's not buffering the residential property.
Can you, can you point on the map? I don't know if you have control.
No, I don't.
I mean, I, we didn't, I could just, I could tell you 100% on that whole buffer, if you say that, I don't know what that's, the side, the south side where the pointer is, that whole side along the driveway. We didn't cut any trees or trim any trees out of there.
Was that all brush and thicket then?
That was brush, thicket, there was a couple, um, you know, dead, and I mean dead, dead. You know, maybe two or three, but we didn't, we didn't cut any trees in there.
I, I don't think you, you cut any large trees.
Or.
But the, the pines that are there are now trimmed up higher than.
You know what? That was the other, that was the neighbor, if those are his trees, we did not trim any trees along that border. I can tell you that much right now.
They're not on the neighbor's property.
Well, then somebody.
No, I don't know if the neighbor went and trimmed them, but, but they're not on the neighbor's property.
Okay, I mean, I can take a look at it tomorrow, but, I mean, I, I know, because I did the, you know, if I did any trimming, the only thing I did on that side was, um, there was a couple of dead trees, you know, and I mean like two or three small ones and whatever, but we didn't go up, uh, trimming up, and I know what you're saying, but we didn't trim up any trees, you know, right?
You know, it does ask for proposed, uh, buffer planning to supplement the existing vegetation. Basically, that's what we're asking for.
Okay.
We want to supplement, supplement the, the gap there against the residential property.
And I have no problem with that.
Okay. Alright, so let's redirect our attention to the roadside along Orchard Road. Um, and let's discuss the, the planting, you know, the plant that were there. Diane, I haven't had a chance to ask you if you have any comments on the plantings and so along Orchard Road.
I kind of like what's proposed. Um, we probably should have just had this discussion from the beginning. Um, you know, to have an additional landscape plan. Um, I just think it's an important piece to help soften the transition from the turnpike into that residential area. The thing, I do have a comment about the, uh, just the white spruce. Um, I, I understand your concern for the height. But the, the pro, or the good thing about the white spruce is it's a, a native tree and it's going to have a a natural kind of a conical growth habit, so it shouldn't get to be too unruly. Um, and as a native, it shouldn't have too, too many pest issues. You know, if you get into some of the funky dwarf things, uh, some of those things are not native and may be more prone to either losing their graft or having pest problems that the white spruce won't.
Alright. And is it being proposed that that whole area is going to be grassed? Is that going to be, uh, where that planting is being proposed?
It is an infiltration system. That's what the dark spot is.
Okay.
So that is on the, um, original plan, it's an infiltration system here.
Okay.
It, I guess can respond as to whether that's the remaining area around will be seeded or otherwise. It would suggest, got confirmation from the applicant?
Yes, um, we were just wondering, uh, we just wanted confirmation, the front strip along Orchard Road, is that going to be, uh, grassed and after the landscaping? Is it going to be, is landscaping going to be, have a grass or green area around it?
I think it's going to be mulch. I, when I talked to the, um, landscape designer, she said have mulch in there and with some, um, flowers. But we'll have this, we'll, we'll see what it looks like too.
Yeah. Um, you know, maybe for the purpose of, you know, this, it seems like we're on the right track, that we're going to get a resolve to the sideline, uh, buffer area. Um, apparently the applicant is willing to take another look at that or revisit with it and try to fill in a little bit. Um, and it also looks like, um, we're going to have a, uh, we all have a better understanding of what's going to be along Orchard Road. So, um, and I, and I'm, I'm sure that the, the applicant is willing to work with the, with staff. If there's any questions or, or that comes up regarding the landscaping issue. Yeah.
I'm just thinking, and I would confirm with the engineering division or public works, however, I imagine they would want the snowshoe to be grass. So.
Okay.
For magic pavement back a certain distance until he has a mulched area, just to let him know and, but we would want to confirm with, uh, public works.
Okay.
As to how they want that treated.
Yeah. So much Paul, you would be willing to work with staff just to tie some of these loose ends here?
Sure.
Okay, terrific. And did you understand, I don't know if you caught what Maureen said, the engineering department would prefer that it be, uh, grassed. Okay, terrific. And did you understand, I don't know if you caught what Maureen said, the engineering department would prefer that it be a grassed area to the road for the shelf, uh, for the snow shelf. And then you can have your mulching for the plants.
Yeah, I think that would soften it up as well.
Yeah, okay, terrific.
Just confirm.
Yeah, all right, so, um, anyone else here, I mean, Mr. Hamel, Mr. Rogan, Sandy, Pocillo, do you have any comments at this time? Or even Peter, is there a, who I see who contacted pleading?
I have comments.
Okay, great. Did, I'm sorry, did you say you had comments? Or, oh, no comments, okay. I was waiting for that. Okay, all righty, um, so I think we've come to a good compromise. Uh, Commissioner?
I, Mr. Rogan, I'll make the motion to approve the landscape, uh, buffer. Uh, with the applicant working with staff and, uh, engineering department.
Okay, terrific, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, thank you, Sandy, and further discussion. And all those in favor? Aye.
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 So as opposed, so move on to new business, a special event application of Alex, oh, thank you, Mr. Pryor, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Application of Alex, uh, once of all, once of all, Keystone Novelties Distributors LLC to erect a temporary tent for the resale, for the retail, retail sale of Connecticut Legal Sparklers and, uh, ground-based fountains from June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two to July fifth, twenty-twenty-two at five-twenty-four Brolin Turnpike. Do we have anyone here for this application? You are.
Online.
Oh, he's online.
Yes, I'm here.
Terrific, thank you, um, so, is this, uh, is this a reoccurring event?
Yes, this is actually, I believe, the eighth year that we'll actually be doing this year. I know we started in a, I believe, twenty-fourteen doing the sale, but this is actually, yeah, going to be a, pretty much a recurring event for us here, just as we've done in the past. Uh, we'll be setting up our temporary firework tent sale to do sales for about that two-week period, uh, no longer than the twenty-second through the fifth of July. And we'll just be simply selling the, uh, variety of ground-based fountains and sparklers that are legal to sell in Connecticut again this year. Just a slightly different lineup of some products, but everything else is pretty much a, a repeat of our, our past year setups that we've had at this property.
Okay, terrific, and Maureen, five-twenty-two Brolin Turnpike, just for those curious, is that over by the, is that sort of the Diadio, almost to the ABC?
It's just south of the Diadio project, it is, of course, from the property of the five-fifty to five-fifty-four application. That was approved for, um, development of a gas, of automotive use, um, a number of years ago. And it's still, it is remaining vacant. And they do have property owner, um, authorization regardless of the pending application. So obviously, that's not moving forward before this time period anyway. So regardless, they did get made sharp, but.
Okay.
The owners were on board. I would like to also note that, um, we, you know, kind of a cheater staff report with regard to using a template from the old one since twenty-fourteen. And we're just keep moving forward with the same thing, updating the dates, and one of them, I'm actually not update while it is on. So don't be confused by the twenty-eighteen in the staff report. It's updated at the top through the staff comments and the conditions we have.
Yeah. All right. And every other, you know, all the other departments are keen and everything.
Yeah, and the applicant has worked well with the fire marshal and, uh, building official with regard to the permits and, and items required for safety and health, et cetera, that each year they have to fly by.
Great, questions, commissioners? And do we have a motion, motion to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the staff permits.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rogan, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hamel. Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Did? You did, okay, so moved. Um, onto the, okay, onto the public hearings. All right, I think we have a, uh, a call to the public hearing, so, Mr. Rogan, will you do the questions?
Town of Burlington Planning and Zoning Commission Public Hearing Notice. The Burlington Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at its regular meeting on Thursday, March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two. At seven PM in the Town Council Chamber's Burlington Hall, two forty Kensington Road, Burlington, Connecticut. Interested parties may join the meeting and participate in the public hearing in person or remotely by video or telephone as provided below. A proposed amendment of zoning regulations of Sando Roach Kids LLC to amend. Nine B, five D. Eight parking and loading fast food restaurants or drive-ins. The application and related meeting materials are available at the Planning and Zoning Department, Burlington Hall, two forty Kensington Road, Burlington, Connecticut. Uh, dated this third day of March twenty-twenty-two at Burlington, Connecticut. Brandon Rogen, Secretary of Planning and Zoning Commission. New Britain Herald classified advertising legal notices dates of publication Saturday, March fifth, twenty-twenty-two, and Monday, March fourteen, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rogan, okay, so the public hearing, so the first item is a special permit application for Dr. Martin Apofo, uh, Diane P. For business offices, um, pro-natural home care at twelve sixty-three Burlington Turnpike, Unit A. In the SP-DZ zone for the Burlington zoning regulations for sixth, um, seat. And do we have anyone here to, is, is, are they online or? Oh, hi, oh, come on, come on up. And use the microphone at the podium, I'll ask you to state your, your name and address, just for the record. And then we can have our, our discussion here. Thank you.
Um, Alapati, seven thirty-eight, New Britain Avenue in Grotty Hill.
Okay.
Zero six, zero six, seven.
All right, terrific, thank you, all right, can you give us a little, or tell us a little bit about this proposal that you have in front of us? I'm curious.
It's a home care agency.
Okay.
And they're starting the business now. He's also a, um, specialized in naturopathy. As a king next door, and he, and he, and you can, like, you can table so that he can run the home care office store.
Okay, so, um, twelve sixty-three Burlington Turnpike, um, can you give me an idea of what, where that location is?
So this is the building just north of Middletown Road before you get to the, um, Route nine entrance ramp, that was the candy factory?
Yeah, okay, okay, so the Worthington Building or whatever it's called.
Yeah.
Plaza.
Plaza, is the name of the.
Okay, so that's where the business is going to be? And this pro-natural home care is, tell me a little bit about that, if you can. What, what exactly is pro-natural home care? I, I'm just curious.
It's just, I mean, it's just.
It's just a name, so is it caregivers?
Yeah.
Okay. So, okay, so it's a caregiving agency, so people call in, they have special needs, and then maybe.
I think they are, I am not just concerned with the patients.
Okay. All right. All right, so that will just, that particular office that you're proposing there is basically just going to be the office for the paperwork. And for people to interview the caregivers or whatever, maybe even the clients, to make a match. Okay, all right, yeah, there seems to be a big need for that unfortunate, that is a growing necessity. Um, uh, this, uh, Maureen, do you have any comments or?
So this use is, um, is it, this is in the SPDD zone. And, uh, basically, all the uses in the SPDD zone require a special, that are listed as approvable, are all listed as special permit uses. So there's no record of what the use of the, this area, the building, et cetera, was. Um, so in order to clean up the record and make sure that each special permit use, if it changes to a new special permit use, commission sees it again. So the commission is seeing this, we, um, the plan that you received in your packet includes, you know, let me stick this for a second. Um, the plan you received in your packet is the last site plan that we defined for the property, the most accurate one. Although the proposed office addition and all the parking to the west, to the east on that is not, was never developed. So his use will be in the section of the building that does exist. Uh, that is on the north end of the building.
Okay, yeah, and are you, are you on the ground floor or upstairs? On the ground floor, okay.
And try to bring up the aerial.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to ask. Um, while Maureen's doing that, do we have any questions from the commissions of this, from the commissioners at this time, uh, before we go to the public? All right, here it is, okay, so I saw we have some citizens who wish to, um, participate in public hearing, which is always good, but hang on for just a second, let me, let me, let Maureen catch up to us. Because we're speeding right through tonight.
And I'm not working, I'm only working on.
We're reserving for a couple more hours.
Who is?
Brewer.
Oh, yeah, oh, that's right, same country.
Package storage for an hour and twenty-three minutes.
Yeah, okay.
Not that I'm paying attention for.
So I just pulled, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I just pulled up the building, uh, site plan you have in your package. So there's an addition here and a whole lot of parking. Okay, that was, that was never developed, so it's within a square footage, it's within, it exists.
Okay.
That's my good share.
Terrific, all right, so turning to the public.
Thank you, Chris Edge, two forty Kensington Road, Economic Development Director. Um, this property for probably my first five years or so here was incredibly underutilized. Very, lots of vacancies, not a lack of none, the owner, the agent have worked very hard on it. Um, I believe we had someone that came in maybe six months ago that took a space. Someone who's going to be taking the space for, uh, medical office use, which is great. And then I believe another one coming up, so I'm excited about it to see the building filled with activity. I know it is a somewhat challenging zone, the SPDD, I'm very glad that, um, this gentleman's looking, I think it'd be a great fit in the building, very low impact. And hopefully we'll bring more tenants in that was building up.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Mr. Edge.
Thank you.
Anyone else, this is the public hearing, so if anyone wishes to address the commissioner regarding this application, that would be the time to do so. Whether you're here in person or online, just let us know.
This commissioner's.
Oh, okay, we're following that, Commissioner Zigma, and hopefully help you.
Yes, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering here, this was always an office building. They had medical offices in it before, uh, it was MBA Engineering, uh, I mean, it's always open office, but I don't know, I'm trying to figure out why this is here. Because it's always been the same used medical office, the building.
So we didn't have a record that shows the uses and it was, you were told this area was vacant for many years. And to have a record of what the, the use was in the SPD district, the special permits include the retail as well as general, general business, medical and office. Um, and banks, all the uses are listed as special permits.
So we're basically cleaning up the record.
If you're, um, uh, if the commission, you know, has that recollection and can somewhat direct me that way for this type of use for offices and retail that fit within that same parking parameter, we can move forward by doing.
Yeah, they, they, they came in, uh, to revive that building, uh, years ago, uh, when they, it used to be a candy place, but not, and they made it bigger and they, they, uh, put that yellow, made it a yellow building with the, on, no siding on it. It always went to all offices that time. Uh, and there was a, a bunch of different office companies in there, uh. One is, uh, uh, they moved up this, down, down southbound, down, down across from, uh, uh, their air compressor place across the street, that, the office building there. Uh, they moved into there, but they always ran this building first. And, and I, I don't remember anything ever but office, built, offices in that building. And when they, we came in for the revision of the plan, uh, that's what it was tended for.
Yeah, but I think as, as Maureen, uh, has stated that, they may have not done that in the past. But we're trying to sort of bring the records up to date. And so that, why, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying and I agree with you, Tim.
Yeah.
Need for that stuff, but because of the, the way the, the, uh, the zone is written. She's just trying to make things compliant as they go along, you know, so.
I agree, I agree that, that this should be compliant, but, uh, I think that whole building should be, uh, uh, done, not just a unit, because we're going to have every unit come in here.
Yeah, but everything is, well, no, as we move forward and we have new applications for the space, I think that's what the intention is. Is not to disturb anyone who's already existing in there with a business. But rather that new business is coming in, we'll just have to take that extra step. So this way, we, we sort of have it all moving in the same right direction. We don't want to penalize any of the businesses that are there. We just, the new folks coming in, like yourself, sir, uh, we just want to make sure that we've got this aligned so that we have that completed and we will march. Yeah.
I do understand, I do understand what they're trying to do, uh, to clean it up, uh, and to, but, uh, there is a lot of units, units in that building. And it is a, a burden to the building owner to have someone that wants a rental unit for office come to us every time. So is there a way that we can correct it now, uh, and approve it as an office building? Uh, something like the, the previous application here would be a different, uh, usage. Uh, but, uh, you know, at least get that foundation of office building in there, medical office, office.
I think what, if I may, I, what I'm hearing is that this, um, the building was approved as commission understands or recalls, really was approved as, um, office space. Therefore, continued office space without requiring attorney for a new special permit. Even if it's a change of document, it's still, uh, it's, it's still functioning as an office space. It falls under that same use and same, same use category. When perhaps other uses come in, for instance, I believe, I have a front page in my agenda. Um, the public hearing you just scheduled, which is for Joey's Place, is childcare and preschool learning center. That's a different use than office, so that would come as a special permit use. But, uh, what I'm hearing is some of the commission would like the office to office to be administrative. And, and follow that as the special permit is already approved for that use.
Yeah, that was streamlined as long as our liberalization allows for it. So, all right, is there anyone else in the public before we, we move on? Oh, oh, yes, 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 yes.
Pauline, complete the record until we have a full history of the site.
All right, please.
Drive. Uh, yes, we were at one time located the site and the site story in the existing building. There was an attorney downstairs, Billy and Kelly, which was the lower floor, took up the whole thirty-five hundred square feet. Uh, and then in the old candy place, uh, there was an accountant, Ralph Phillips was the original developer. I believe there might have even been a third building that was proposed in the back, uh, that was never constructed. Uh, but they basically had the existing building and the first building built and they had full access. So they didn't soon even build that. Uh, the building, I believe, was approved at late nineteen eighty sometime, uh, for offices. And that's where we moved, we, we were in there about four or five years, really kill that site for, uh, usage. Was affected, the state took out a curb cut on the Burlington Turnpike, just to the north of the site. So it means if you ever left that site, that, all the way down. So it's reset to the other section. But that site was always approved for offices. There's nothing, uh, different. Self, when after we left, it was additionally used and then another radio station was in there. I think a model that you, as you say, was in there, but basically they're all, that's the history of the site, so. That's the history of the site, so Maureen can have that, that.
All right, well, thank you, anyone else from the public who would just, or just the commission? The commission, here, anyone questions, whatever, all right, then does anyone have a motion to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, Mr. Rockin, thank you for the motion to close, second, second by Sandy Paul, uh, for the discussion, and all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Tim? Tim?
Yeah, I, I would just like to make sure that the, this motion concludes that the, the building is approved for office and we are approving this unit for it. But any, any other uses like the daycare or something like that would have to come in, but I think it is, it is a, a planning office thing to approve, uh, whatever's going in there, uh, alongside this office type, and if it's not, come to us.
Yeah, I, I think that says what our intention is.
Right now, we're just.
But right now, we're just closing the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so you, you wrote I on closing the public hearing, Tim?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, all right, moving on to the proposed amendments to zoning regulations for Sandra Roach Kids LLC, women, the nine P five P eight parking and moving fast food restaurants or drive-ins, okay. We have the advocate with her close this evening, thank you for your patience.
You're welcome. Hi, my name's Sandra W. Roach, one point six Thund Drive, and I do have a PowerPoint, and I have made, oh, wow, so, yeah. Thank you. We'll have one more. One for the bathroom here, okay?
Well, I guess I have it.
She have a bathroom?
I have it.
Okay. You have it on here?
Yeah.
From the heart, I was told.
That's always.
Okay, so. Maureen. Okay, um, the prep work that I did prior to this uh text amendment request, um, I did have a few meetings, um, one with Chris Edge, telephone electronically and in person, we kind of had quite a few meetings, um, the, we had a town economic board meeting, the whole board on January twenty fifth, spoke with the fire marshal and spoke with Maureen about this, solid presentation. So what I'm requesting is a text amendment to the parking uh regulations and okay, this was my application, I'm gonna read from it, cause I can't. Uh, fast food restaurant or drive-ins, the regulation calls for the minimum number of spaces, one for three seats or of the G F A or one for three seats, whichever is greater, so what I'm doing is requesting a change to make it one for twenty, one twenty five. What led to this, we have a restaurant that would love to come into our, um, one of the properties that we own. And um, this is the next, this slide here is their proposed floor plan. Um, to, to have it fit with the regulations, they need to change, uh, they don't need, we're asking that they be changed. Um, so this building that is on one one seven six Farmington Avenue, actually they would like half of the building and for the parking to accommodate the restaurant, uh, you know, I'm, I'm asking for this regulation to change to the whole town because of the growth that's going on in Berlin and the changing of restaurants and whatnot. So what, what wants to come in from a restaurant, uh, you can see that they have thirty chairs that they're, they want. We have parking that has enough to accommodate our changes that we are requesting, um. The second half of the building needs to have eight spots set for it, because you know, we wanna make sure we have enough for another business there. Moving to the second, next page, this is a comp I found, so in nineteen, uh, two thousand and sixteen, a very similar building of, uh, with, actually, and I have the, the address um, uh, following, but it was approved, so on December fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, they came before the board here and it was a noodle bar at one one two eight Farmington Avenue. Um, and if I point out to the, something, there may be the third line down, there may be minor parking issues in the future, if the other half of the building fills and parking may need to be addressed, um, I actually went and spoke to the owner and he said there's been no pro, parking problems. So, you know, regulations seem to need to be adjusted with the, the coming times that we are in. Uh, the next piece of information I did, I compared the two properties, that's the noodle place to the property that we own. And I have aerial views, um, comparing our property, we have possibly a twenty four to twenty six spots. And their property has sixteen spots, uh, we want thirty seats, they have forty seats, our building is a hundred feet smaller, theirs is a hundred feet larger. Yep, this page, uh, it's in the same zone, it's the CCD dash two zone. I pulled up comp cards and compared them, and the only thing wrong is that, back up. Uh, the picture, that's the wrong picture, on the website, there's a picture of a house that was, the house that was there prior to building the commercial building. So the comps are the same in those two properties, then we go to this one and that just showed you the zone. Um, so they're both in the same zone, they're actually three buildings away from each other. Uh, then I compared, did a little more research, I compared Southington's Rex, so, uh, and then I, another one to Britain, so in Southington their parking regulations and I've highlighted them, one parking for two seats per restaurant or three per, um, a thousand gross square footage, um, retail, so the retail part would need seven. So if our building was in Southington and a similar building to ours in Southington, the regulations would, you know, we only need twenty two spots for the whole building. So our regulations would try out thirty something and theirs are twenty two. Uh, in Britain, comparing one for four permanent seats. Uh, one per three fifty square feet of office space, so then if our building was in New Britain, we would need fourteen, we're only requiring thirty something slots. So in closing, it's my hope that the commission will see that the trend in the dining, uh, restaurant dining is, it's moving to takeout, it's the delivery. Um, there's still some in dining going on, um, but that, that's one of the thoughts, uh, the town's working hard to have growth. Um, it's our hope that you use your, this wisdom and grant this tax amendment and then that'll solve a lot of, you know, issues that coming forward of other restaurants that wanna come to town. Um, if you don't see that this tax amendment is worthy, um, you know, you have the power to grant, you're very far with people um, and sign off the parking as you see that, you are. Um, and okay, and then I have other people that would like to come up on our behalf, but do you have a question?
Oh, it's about the presentation, so thank you very much.
It's about the presentation, so thank you very much for that, um, the building that, just because, you know, I, I'm looking at this, this picture here and I'm trying to place the building. Um, so this is, is this right next to the?
Rashford Island.
Okay, so this is the one in from the, uh, farm.
It's between, there's a coffee shop, sandwiches, and it used to be Eric's Joe's and then it used to be the Y.
Okay.
Y is the Y.
Are there two separate, because I, during your presentation, we talked about a Mexican restaurant.
Yeah, so that's, we have a client who wants to rent, looking at the building, the left hand side of.
Oh, okay.
They want half of the building.
Okay, so your proposal is for just that half of the building, is that what we're talking about?
Correct, and leaving spots to park for the second half, because we need to accommodate when we rent out the second half. So the restaurant would like to, you know, lease the first half, the left hand side.
Okay, all right.
What we want, need to accommodate the parking is the issue, which is why, yeah, change the text.
Okay, all right. We got that on the house, okay, any questions?
I have a, yeah, zoning regulations for, uh, takeout is specific that if the food is served for, um, takeout in a parking. I, I could read the regulations. Basically, it's, you know, is it in takeout containers or is it served as restaurant food? Uh, like, nice and forks, the stuff they have to put in the dishwasher.
Oh, oh.
Um, so that's the difference between our parking regulations, we have certain regulations for regular restaurants or sit down in, in restaurants, and then we have takeout regulations, the takeout regulations currently say one for seventy five square feet of gross floor area or one for three seats, whichever is greater, the, um, the, the prompting of this regulation amendment by the applicant, as they stated, was because of this building and having two tenants in the building. We always, when there's additional floor area within a building, our standard that, that they have to provide basically in the commercial zones is one for two fifty, which is allows for offices and retail, and that's our standard. Um, so if they use up all the party for half of the building, then they have to leave the building, the, the other half of the building vacant. Our, our standard is one for two fifty, so they have to reserve one for two fifty for that other half unless it was otherwise occupied.
Mm-hmm.
And, and then, um, have the rest of the party accommodate a higher use, so.
All right, about other commissioners before we go to the public for input, other commissioners have questions at this time with the applicant?
Yes, this is Commissioner Sigma.
Yes, Tim, go ahead.
Yes, uh, I wanted first to compliment the, the applicant here on the presentation, I think it's the best presentation I've seen on for zone change or anything. But uh, it's great, you did a great job with your homework. But I thi, I think, uh, we've done this before in Farmington Avenue and I do not object to, uh, the idea that she's, uh, put forward. Because, uh, it's a, you know, changing with the times.
Okay, all right, um, okay, we're in the public hearing, uh, any other commissioners with questions before we move to the public? Okay, so, is there anyone here who wishes to address the commission regarding this application in the form of guests, I'm giving time to speak. And we have a winner, uh, no, thank you.
He's gonna bring down the power plate.
Okay, okay.
Do the meeting commissioners present, I just put a letter together, but I'll just kinda hit a couple of high points, um. The Economic Development Commission and I are both in favor of a change to the regulations, uh, I think it better reflects the current marketplace with Grubhub on the go nature of the world. Um, my discussions with design professional municipal officials as well as those in commercial real estate have helped to bolster the opinion that I have on the issue. Uh, there is an attached sheet I have put as well, um, essentially a couple other communities, um, Ellington uses one for one hundred for um, theirs, that's, that's not include bathrooms and the other areas, um, and then a commercial real estate agent I know very well in Rocky Hill, uh, one for one twenty five, and then in addition, um, if you don't see fit to do the one for one twenty five, I would ask that you at least consider maybe one for one hundred or only using the spaces used for restaurant customers, because I've found that a number of communities use the basically the, the square foot, because it takes out the kitchen and the bathrooms, so, but I think this is great, um, it's a nice opportunity especially, and I really look at Farmington Avenue as being the biggest area, because we are looking to get more restaurants, I'd like to be able to have a, a diversity on it, so I appreciate your time on this evening.
Thank you, is there anyone else who would like to address the question? And yes, sir.
Good evening, y'all.
Good evening.
My name is Charlie College, I'm the president of Development Planning Solutions, uh, our address is seventy three Meadows Street, Bristol, Connecticut. And I have a client who, uh, has conglomerate owns Dunkin' Donuts franchises, Baskin Robbins, Chick-fil-A, Popeyes, Bo's, Southwood's Grill. Uh, together, their group owns about, uh, three hundred locations throughout England. This sir actually asked me to, to give some input into this parking under the guise of, hey, what other towns do, uh, what goes on in the world other than, than Berlin? So we got to talking about this and he asked me to come speak, uh, on this issue tonight. Parking tends to be one of the issues that sort of gets forgotten in other tax amendments when we're talking about changing uses or changing design standards, parking seems to be the one thing that just never gets addressed, so I applaud you for at least taking up this issue tonight. Couple of things to, uh, to add to what was said earlier, um, one of the things that we're seeing, especially now in the world of, of COVID is an increase in the, the table turn inside of a restaurant, so in years prior, customers would spend on average forty five to fifty minutes longer in a restaurant than they do now, even in the increase in takeouts and Grubhub and that, that, those sort of things, people are still going into restaurants, but they're spending significantly less time at the table. Which means the cars turn over faster than they used to, so there is no longer the need for, uh, these sort of oceans of asphalt to go along with some of these restaurants, we're seeing a tremendous increase in drive-through activity. Our group was actually the first in the nation to sort of pioneer the drive-through only Dunkin' Donuts locations that we're starting to see throughout Connecticut now. Because a lot of the fast food chains are heavily prioritizing the drive-through over the dining. Um, they're also finding that they can do a lot more with a lot less staff, so the staff parking is less of a concern than it was been a year and a half ago. One of the other things that was mentioned was potential parking to be shared, a lot of these places exist in plaza situations, I know when you're speaking of a text amendment, you have to consider the entirety of the zone or the entirety of the town as it were, uh, a lot of these locations exist in plazas where the parking is shared between other uses, uh, certainly, uh, situations where restaurant uses are off-peak to other uses that may be there, so the parking deal as a whole can shrink. So in, in summation, I guess what I would say is our experience in, in the parking, especially when it comes to the bastard, less is more. We have other towns that operate with that one to one hundred number that seems to work fine. Uh, we have done lots of work in, in communities where they only apply the parking to the net square footage of the dining room. Some towns apply the net square footage to the dining room with a caveat for a staff parking addition to cover the kitchen and the bathroom space. There's a lot of different ways to do this that are very effective, and I think the way that was outlined tonight with one to one hundred or one twenty five is certainly very effective. So any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Oh, any questions? I, I guess there's none at this time, but thank you, thank you, um. All right, uh, yes. We now have another testimony.
Park will be by the drive. Your parking regulations, I used to know backwards, over, over the years, not so much, but for the last forty years, looking at those. Except for a few minor exceptions, I'm sure Tim will point out every level, but, uh, generally the regulation hasn't changed that much. And that includes restaurants between a sit-down restaurant and a fast food, generally you have the Donald Perperty. Herby's, uh, Pizza Hut slash Taco Bell, and then the Dunkin' Donuts in town being the fast food establishments. And it's been stated before, the model for the restaurants has changed, probably more significantly in the last five, ten years, now some of that might have been COVID. But I think it's a trend that's coming and it started a little bit beforehand. When, give you a little insight information, when people come in to me and wanna know, well, if I can expand this, can I expand this, usually parking is the number that really dictates exactly what they can do, and the way I always phrase it is, there's two really types of parking. One is the number that the zoning requires, so we do the calculation based on the square footage of what the building provides. And then we ask the, the person in the office, does this operationally meet, meet your needs? In twenty twenty five years ago, the operational number was pretty close to what to what the regulations required. Like more and more, we're getting skewed away where they're saying, I don't need thirty parking spaces. I need fifteen parking spaces. I'm never gonna have that many people in the restaurants. I'm not, don't have that many employees. And I think, you know, I know what's been proposed. Uh now I'm fine with that. At very least, I think the commission needs to at least adopt something that allows the commission to look at cases individually instead of just doing a car block, a shunker, seventy-five, or three uh space for three seats. It at least gives the commission the opportunity, because what happens is these people who have these buildings are looking new areas, and I told you, you have hardship to get a rent. But I don't think you want the ZPA dictating what your parking requirements are going to be for your users. I think it's better off served that the planning and zoning commission directs that instead of somebody figuring out how hardship can be drawn out and go through there. So I think it's very important the commission keeps up track of what's going on, and I think when an applicant comes in and shows what they need, you can be very specific on what you're going to need for deliveries, employees, and parking and deliveries, because remember, these models for fast food are totally different. You never see that McDonald's parking like that. Never ever ever anymore. Maybe twenty years ago was always filled with lunch, but now it's not done. The model for them has changed. They do the drives-throughs much quicker. They've got a double wing now to take the cars off the road. And they bring people through much faster, so people don't have to stop to go inside and park. They can do a much faster operation. And I think that's just one example of the way restaurants are evolving in their model and how they work with, you know, the Uber deliveries and such. Uh I think if a business can demonstrate that they don't need as much parking and the number that Sandy just submitted is fine, and I think it's consistent with the way towns are going. But I think uh the commission needs to be open, looking at different areas. Now, Farmington Avenue, I think it's a special case. You've got a lot of buildings, one for two fifty, one for one twenty-five, if it's medical. You're kind of stuck with those numbers, and and I think from the restaurant standpoint, you're kind of coming down. When you get into the turnpike where you're probably going to have your next large number, those are bigger sites. And I think you can do a lot more with those sites than what's required. But I think in the age of not building a lot of impervious surface and minimizing impervious surface and drainage runoff, I think this goes a long way to kind of serving that function so.
Change is difficult sometimes.
It's difficult, but I think it's well thought out.
Yeah.
And you know, it doesn't mean you you're stuck with this. You can always do this on a provisional basis and our work.
And and I think you have to agree that this commission has been very fair to applicants.
You've got to realize that I tend to weed out a lot of people before they even step forward.
No, I understand. We don't want, we don't want to certainly turn anyone who wants to start a business here or bring your business to.
And I think with this minor change in the regulations, I think you can do a big boom to the business of Farmington Avenue. You got a lot of new buildings going up. You've got a lot of buildings that are being emptied and these get filled in.
And then you you like them.
And then you have.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate your uh professional test. Uh Maureen, do you have any um comments at this time regarding the regulation? Or is this something that we just laid our site? Or I I because it almost sounds like we got to do a whole text amendment or a new weight from the community.
So this is um this proposal is for a very specific tax amendment. To amend the tax for the um drive-through parking regulations. Restaurants, I'm a drive-through, I think is the way it's worded. I wrote that down somewhere. Um but I did also go through um a number of different towns. I think probably eight or ten um and found that, well, let me back up a minute. A number of years ago, we modified the our restaurant parking regulations to try to solve an issue of when the parking was designed for one per the number of seats only. Then the seats might change because all it takes is an owner to go buy new tables and chairs, and now we have choice as many seats as we had before. We've all eaten in cities and you sit like this versus um during COVID, you sit twelve feet apart. So, you know, just to back that, that big difference in how many seats fit in the same space. Um so there was that change to try to fix that. We went uh we tried to work with occupancy that has created a problem with staff being able to determine what that number is because the fire marshal doesn't count an occupancy of the building at that level, only once he hits a threshold of assembly that there's really an occupancy number. So it works for big restaurants, it works for banquet halls, it works for things like that. It works uh but it works less for fast food and smaller restaurants. For us to to define what is an adequate number. Um so we we did work to modify that a number of years ago. I was probably eight of them, so I'm not really sure what year that was. Um but that was changed. Um Helen was still here. Um it's not perfect. So this is a new mod- another modification to that, hoping it works with that a bit. And looking at the regulations that I looked at, Arlington, Middletown, North Haven, Bramford, Treasure, Newton, Manchester, Stafford. Those are the ones that I have on this particular list here. Um many of them did, as Chris mentioned, define the, rather than gross floor area, they use patron area or customer area. Um one of the things, I think, going back in our regulation years and years and years ago, looking at how they seem to evolve was, you know, that the counter moves with renovations. Of course, some of those renovations come to the commission, some of them don't. Um now they all go to the zone. A building permit prompts only if it requires a building purpose, so they get staff review. I think there were some, you know, there were times when they chair renovation didn't necessarily get a staff review. Um so that's one thing to consider. I do think in the proposed regulation if you chose to go for it, and also for those, some of the numbers went down to, for instance, one per fifty square feet of patron area. And others were one per seventy-five, one to one hundred plus one per two employees in the highest shift. You know, whatever, there there kind of, there wasn't anything that's really a standard to stand by. Although ours do seem to require some of the largest number of spaces. When you calculate it out for the buildings, it does seem as though ours are on some of somewhat more restricted than others because it does include the entire gross floor area. So that gross floor area is from the walls of the building. The only things that are excluded are stairwells and um mechanical rooms, basically.
Is there anything?
Not the kitchen, not.
So if they have like a kitchen area, walk-in freezer, um bathrooms, all that, that's all considered.
That's all part of the gross floor area.
Yeah, okay.
So as the regulation is proposed as changing from one per seventy-five to one per one twenty-five, I just wanted to clarify whether that remains um with the gross floor area at the end to make sure of that. That the zoning officer doesn't have a problem in the future, oh, well, floor area, am I supposed to be using that?
Yeah, right.
To do the calculation. And I think that was the intent of choosing the one twenty-five instead of saying, okay, keep that one for for seventy-five, but have it be customer area. I don't know what their thought process was, but I think their number would have been lower if they were going to say say customer area. So I think that was the intent.
Um commissioners, do we? Commissioners, do we have any questions? Uh Tim, Diane, or Peter?
I don't have, I don't have any questions, but um to me, the patron count seems to make more sense.
Okay.
As a guide.
All right. Uh anyone else, Peter or Tim or anyone here on?
Yeah, this is Tim. Uh I think this is a good proposal right now. Uh I think that uh with the future of uh what we're building downtown, the Kentston downtown, uh steel, whatever they call it now. Uh they're gonna have retail in the bottom, restaurants in the bottom. This is going to come up more than once because we're looking for this walk-in area for people to do little pastry shops, coffee shops, whatever. Uh so this go come up more than once. Uh but I think this is a good step down. I think we should, and later on, look at that one in hundred. Uh but I think this is a good step down at this time.
Okay, um but Diane, going back to you, Diane, just for clarification, so your idea was to go by a patron count and base your parking spaces on that versus um parking spaces per square foot of patron area? In other words, your seating area? Just, I I I just wanted to know what your thought was on that.
Yes, well, uh to me, it makes sense uh one space per two patrons.
Okay, so if you have a table, if you have tables that will seat thirty, then you would basically need fifteen spaces.
Yeah, and I, you'd need a, you would have to have a few extra for employees, so, you know, maybe one. Uh I I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I don't. Right now, it's one.
So it's one per three right now, and that includes the employees. That's how I I think it's a matter of some labels on four, some, I don't know. I, you know, it's been there as as Mr. Boe said, it's been there that way for many years. This is the way it's been written as the one per three. Um and that accounts for kitchen staff at the one per three or the one per seventy-five square feet of gross floor area. That counts for those that are um doing other tasks within the restaurant besides eating. Um I would like to just um clarify that this is the amendment posted and before the commission's modifications to this amendment could certainly be discussed and and would be permitted. Alter amendments when they're proposed, but we just have to make sure we're clear on how that's getting done.
Okay.
That it's done within the framework of the proposal.
Okay. All right, so. Yes. Yeah.
I'm good.
You're good? Okay. Anyone else have any comments? All right, so. Um all right, so what's the uh, we are still in the public hearing, so Sandy, do you have a question on sound? Will you make a question or present?
No, I was gonna.
Okay, go for it. Yes, that calls the public hearing. Um Sandy McCallum has the uh motion. Do we have a second?
A second and a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Roeven. Uh further discussion on this item? Then all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, I suppose so moved, okay. Um continuing on the public hearings, item C, which was for the application of fine fifty-five, fifty-four growing ten hundred associations. Um apparently, this applicant has withdrawn um and is going to be coming back at some later time. So you're not, we're not going to be hearing that. Uh so last one is, this is a public hearing that is continued, is a special private pipeline application with Reserve SMLLC for seventy-six residential units and forty-eight buildings and twenty-eight single-family units, a lot more. Fifty-one rande for lane, uh parents are all. So, and this is the last item of public hearing before we go back and revisit uh the current application, so. Please just sit tight. Okay, and we have Attorney Sullivan at the podium now.
Good evening.
Yes, hi, Glenn. How are you?
Good.
Oh, yeah. Eric O'Brow, what else?
Green, green print. Anyway, good evening, Tim Sullivan, on behalf of the applicant, the Reserve SMLLC. Uh I don't know how much background information we have. This is the third public hearing, uh which is briefly, it's off of Westinga Cluster Housing. Building is proposed adjacent to Ragged Mountain. The property is located in a PR2 zone which requires public water, public sewer as part of the regulation. It's on two hundred and twenty-nine acres, also known as fifty-one rande after lane. The project actually is only a hundred and ten acres. Uh nineteen will be, as opposed to be due into the Brooklyn Land Trust. Fifty-sixth will be uh preserved in a conservation easement, and twenty will be uh the actual residential development. And as was indicated in the public hearing, go to seventy-six units, forty-eight will be two or four family units. And twelve, rather, forty-eight will be two or four families, and twenty-eight will be single-family. At the last meeting, we submitted a lot of different materials. Bart reviewed those. Um we kind of went to, we continued the public hearing. We hadn't had any engineering comments yet. We reviewed, we received those engineering comments. And in addition to that, I just wanted, Bart will be reviewing those engineering comments. We uh we have, we have not had the uh time to fully respond to the engineering comments. Bart has not revised the plans yet. It's my understanding that earlier today, Bart was trying to have a meeting set up with Michael Harnell, let him speak to that so that the next meeting, we can have a final set of plans that fully addresses everything. But just a little housekeeping on my end. Um I know the eight twenty-four uh uh remains an issue, and I believe that was on the council agenda for Tuesday night, uh search to refer it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have the conservation easement that I submitted last time. I gave a pro forma conservation easement. Uh we've had various conversations with Dennis Kern with Brooklyn Land Trust. Uh he's proposed a couple of minor revisions to that conservation easement. Uh that's um they're in, they're involved, Redline, but they're involved, submitting that to the commission as well. We also have, I submitted various water and sewer agreements to the commission at the last meeting. I would like to report that the Water Control Commission has actually signed that agreement which allows the Kenton Fire District to supply public water to this project. Uh it's before the Kenton Fire District on Monday night, we we expect the Kenton Fire District will approve that and sign it. And on the client's side, it will be, we'll provide a copy of that to the commission at its at its next meeting. Finally, we will be leaving the uh hearing open tonight because we're going to be making a subsequent submission of the revised plans. Uh so I will be following up with an email, but I mean, we are agreeing to extend the public hearing to the next public hearing.
Okay.
Hopefully, we won't have any snow until now the next public hearing.
Don't even say it.
Done, done, done. But Ellen's spring, just a couple of days.
Well, it's officially spring. There's onion grasses grown.
Oh, that's a long story. All I need to come back to that. Okay, so we actually.
I'm gonna turn it over to Bart for one second. Your comments is, his comments.
And while Bart's getting set up, I just want to make sure that uh Senator Stephen Viella is on board with this item. So at this point, I'm just for the record, Peter Girobozo is stepping down, Stephen Viella is taking that seat. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Bart.
Get you cold, son, representing, yeah, I can't. I promise to be brief. Uh thanks for the update here where we where we did get Mike's comments like two hours ago at the meeting uh last time, so it's possible, obviously, to submit plans. I have subsequently gone through and provided Maureen with a list of responses to the comments just to basically let them know that we've seen these comments and we will make some adjustments. Uh most of Mike's comments were technical in nature, checking some inverts, checking some uh some grades, making sure some water services are done. He has a couple of comments about the uh uh the uh.
I don't know, don't worry, I lose words all the time.
Regarding the uh environmental analysis was provided, so we kind of sharpened it up a little bit. One of which dealt with the sanitary sewer, as you know, uh there's some limitations in the Kenton Fire District's capacity as we leave the site. And we've been asked to meter back our flows during the daylight portion and hold them back until the the evening hours to discharge our sewer through the existing infrastructure. I've talked to Dan McKeon at the Kenton Fire District. He's put me in touch with uh one of his pump experts, because I figured if we're going to deal with it, it's a fire district, I will deal with their experts. Uh so we're gonna have a meeting with them shortly, but basically we're planning on putting open tanks basically near the sub- the tank or the uh the pump station that will allow us to hold back flows. Uh looking at a low-flow metering system. It gets technical, but anything over two hundred gallons per day of sewer is not acceptable. It gets technical, but anything over two hundred gallons per day of sewer is not acceptable, based on the report the fire district was given. So what we're doing is we're looking to meter our flow of very low rates during the daylight portion, so we replicate more of residential development and holding back peak flows so that flows through the. Area, so it's a matter of working with the, getting the right pumps and the right, uh, uh, switching systems in place, so we can, uh, we can meter that. But Mike's comments are pretty generic and easily available. Uh, I got double, about half Maureen, I reached out to Mike and pressed up a meeting with him. So I can meet face to face with him, make sure he sees where all the comments are, and he can respond with any other concerns he has, so we can deal with the engineering items directly. Uh, as Tim mentioned, uh, we do have the aspect of the eight twenty-four on the, uh, on the parking area, and, uh. I think that's about it. Mike is looking for some details on the, uh, on the bridge and on the color. I don't know that also, so, uh, hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have met with Mike. We'll have got the plans revised, we can submit the plans, you can get it in your packages, but I have a supplemental package. And you'll have everything revised and ready to go.
Something we're using, it works.
When it works.
Yes, Maureen, to clarify, I do have the eight twenty-four referrals that came in after the, I mean, after the town council meeting the other night. Um, I just want to make a note that the eight twenty-four is a different consideration than the development plan. Um, they're obviously married, however, it's not a public hearing item, your eight twenty-four decision is not. Yeah, a public hearing thing. So at what point do we put that on the agenda, uh, or are we getting, you could potentially add it to the agenda so that it can. Be addressed, I guess, you know, it's coming, um, but I would think, and Attorney Sullivan may have. A different take on it, but that the decision would come at the time of the decision of the proposal, as to whether or not. Uh, it was appropriate, but, or, or you can make the decision on that, send it back to town council and, um, and it's. A matter of when they determine they'll convey it, if they decide to move forward with that, regardless of the decision. So it can be dealt with before that. I do have them to hand out as supplemental material if you wanted to add it to the agenda, but I. Um, would suggest it not be added as part of the public hearing, you can find the items for the public hearing, and that it be. Separate items dealt with as commission business, as opposed to as a public.
Yeah, I, I would agree, I understand twenty-four is just, it's just. Yeah, it's a referral, it has nothing to do with that, but that's the least of our worries at this point.
It is, I understand from the commission standpoint. Um, we're, we're on a, uh, kind of a time-sensitive basis.
Oh.
Only that in terms of, uh, purchase and sale agreement, contingencies, and dates, and all that. Um, so I would ask that it be added to the agenda, and for continuity purposes, uh, we could continue the public hearing. And before old business, just simply add an eight twenty-four referral, because we need a decision from the council before this commission can make a decision. Because this commission, if the council makes a decision, yes, we accept this proposal, and they're going to, um, deed the property to the town of Brolin. And then the town of Brolin in eight twenty-four says, we don't want it, what are we gonna do? So we need to know before this decision, before this commission makes a decision, whether the town council was going to accept this property. Because they're the body that actually accepts the transfer. And so what we need, really what's gonna happen is, um, this has been referred to the commission, um, to take a position as to whether they think this should be accepted or not by the council. The council can then actually reject your opinion and just do it, do either pro or con what you suggest. But we need that decision before this commission can make a decision.
Okay.
All right. First, Steve Jarrow, I have no objection to that establishment. You can add it as just a mission business separate, it's a referral.
Yeah, I just, I, I don't want to commingle it with the application.
No.
Okay, so I just, I just want it to be clear and clear whenever, okay, so we can always, i- is that something that we're adding tonight?
You have to decide to do that.
Okay, so, um, commissioners, uh, and I'm just gonna talk, because I know that they've already asked for us to continue the public hearing, which we will have a motion to do that. But in the meantime, with the eight twenty-four, uh, pertaining to this application, I don't know if the spokes online had, were you able to hear Attorney Sullivan's explanation? And that would be to Tim, to, um, Steve Viella, and to Diane. Were you able to understand, uh, what Tim's, uh, Attorney Sullivan had addressed? Regarding the eight twenty-four on this portion of the application? And that.
This commissioner, I do understand what he wants to do, uh. Uh, we've never done that before, you know, the council always sent it to us after their decision to us to send them a recommendation. Uh, I don't know if we could send them a recommendations before they get it, uh, so.
Can I clarify? Tim, um, commissioners, let me clarify that on Tuesday night, the town council did forward the request for a recommendation to. The, um, and zoning commission. I have that resolution right here. They, they sent it to you on Tuesday night, so we now have it.
Okay.
So it's a new item that's being brought up this evening.
So, yeah, so the question I was, I was just trying to get a consensus from the commission, if we can add this onto our agenda at the end of the agenda.
We can add it to the end of the agenda and act on it.
Yeah, okay, Diane, how about, uh, your input?
That's fine.
Okay, and then for Steve Viella?
Yeah.
Okay, you're good. Uh, Mr. Hamel, we're good? Uh, Mr. Robin?
Um, yeah, I mean, as long as. We're still in public hearing, it doesn't matter.
Not on the, well, we're, we're, okay, we're in public hearing because we haven't closed or continued this public hearing to the next one. But this is a, a part of the consideration for the development, so I just want the consensus that we will, we are going to add this as an item to the agenda, the eight twenty-four only. Today. We'll decide that after we get through the public hearings and the, and the revisits of the applicants, we're so patiently waiting.
Yeah, all right, as long as there's no complaints.
Okay. And Sandy, okay, all right, so as a consensus is we'll add the eight twenty-four consideration to the end. All right, so, um, because we, the applicant has asked that we continue the public hearing, we need a motion to continue.
I'll make the motion to continue.
All right, thank you, Sandy, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Jersey, for the discussion on the item, and all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Okay, okay, good. And now, we're gonna do the flip flop, so Peter Zerbozo's back on, Steve Viella is off, all right, so we keep that straight. All right, um, okay, so where are we in my agenda? I just lost my agenda, this is not good, folks. Okay, here we go. All right, so now we're going out to old business. So we have the special permit application that we heard for Dr. Martin of Buck, Guy Campy. For business offices at Pro Natural Home Care at twelve sixty-three Brolin, from IQ Unit A, and the SP-GD Zone Per Brolin Zoning Regulations for six C. All right, so, uh, we've had the, um, applicant before us, we've taken in the testimony, and, um, commissioners, uh, it's time for us to consider what we might do here. Any questions or, uh, discussion?
Sure, I mean, it sounds like I'm in favor of it, and especially earlier, because I don't think this commission would. Like to address the special permit, uh, part of, of the zone and continue uses that no longer needing. Coming for us, uh, for special permits, uh, for new occupants, plus.
Oh, okay, so you're making a motion to approve, uh, with the consideration that because of the location, because it's a business office, business, uh, building. That, um, folks who are going to be bringing similar type businesses into the office will no longer need to come to planning and zoning for, uh, an approval. All right, and that we can just have a, a smooth transition, um, we'll streamline it, and if there's any issues, obviously, staff is available to the applicants. If there's any questions or concerns that come up, is, is that pretty much.
Very well said, and I'll make that my move.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All right, so further discussion? Uh, folks on board, on, on Zoom, Tim, uh, Diane, or us, uh, Peter Zerbozo, any questions?
No.
None.
So I'll call, call for the vote, and all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? So moved, all right, going on to the next business, we have a proposed amendment to the zoning regulation of Sandra Roche, it's LLC, momentum nine B five, B eight. Parking and loading, fast food restaurants are drive-ins. All right, so we have quite an elaborate presentation by Ms. Roche, I think the appointment's well taken. And I think that this commission has always tried to look to bring in new businesses, um, I'm intrigued by the thought of a Mexican restaurant. Uh, although I did, I did forget to ask the applicant during public hearing, I, as the non-publicary, was there a bar or a rest, was there a barber or a lady? Or a margarita?
They better do margaritas. Make them move that margaritas as blasphemous.
Something, why not in the public hearing, so I can't ask. Okay, um, all right, so, but what's the feel for the commission? Because it's an interesting thing, and we, I don't think we want to stop businesses from coming in, but obviously, we have to resolve this parking issue somehow. And, um, and maybe that's something that we have to take up in the future or the P O C D. What do you think, the guys online, those who are present?
I, I think we need to keep, uh, Brolin competitive in with the research, or even, uh, reaching out to other towns. Um, it does sound like we're a little behind on that, um, as far as the correct way to do it. I like the idea of having the square foot patron area, uh, I think it's easily applied to the distance, that's, you know, that's my opinion, and of course, after discussion.
Okay, other commissioners?
Yeah, I would, I'd agree, I think patron area is a good idea because of, uh, you can have a very big operation on most of the catering or something like that. Which is all being taken out of the plan. Uh, but at that point, do we still want to go with the one per hundred and twenty-five square feet, or do we want to bring it? Down to a lower number? I feel like the way that, uh, text amendment was presented, uh, the one per twenty-five square feet, if you consider all of the. Uh, gross area of the entire restaurant, you know, you're kind of getting the same result. Just a little bit different text. But I, I think it's a step in the right direction, uh. Yeah, I would be, I can, I would agree, I think.
Yeah, okay, uh, Mr. Hamel, any comments? Okay, turning online, we have Tim and Diane and, uh, Peter, so do you have any questions or comments regarding this, or?
Uh, this commissioner, Zigma, uh, I just want to address, uh, Dr. Martin, uh, that he got his approval, I don't, I don't know if you, if you, you realize that, sir. Uh, because you're still on, I figured you'd leave, but, uh, if you're interested. You're interested in our meeting, thank you. Nice host.
Interested in what's happening with the commission, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you.
I never have anyone who actually wants to listen to us, come on.
Wait, wait.
My eye.
Good grief, um, Diane?
Uh, okay, well, hold on, hold on.
Wait, wait, oh, you have more? You're not gonna insult anyone else on this.
Sorry, on this amendment, uh, I think the one twenty-five is good at this time, uh, with the square footage of the unit, whatever it is. Uh, if it goes to patrons, uh, you know, they put that counter in there, uh, inside the building, and the patron area is small. Then the calculation goes on that small area, and then later on, that counter moves back. Uh, so, so, you know, you got the small amount of park places and the counter moved back. Uh, I think the, the regulation at the one point five is, uh, good. We may want to consider it down to the one hundred later on, uh, to bring those park places down a little bit more. Uh, but, uh, I think the proposal as, as drawn right now is good.
Okay, um, Diane, any in- input, or Peter Zerbozo, any input?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Zerbozo, yeah, I support the, uh, the text amendment to, uh, one hundred and twenty-five square feet. I think it's a good way for the town to stay competitive and also reduce unnecessary, um, impervious asphalt, uh, area, which really doesn't serve much need. Um, you know, just, just for food for thought or entertaining, I mean, the seventy-five square foot. Change to one twenty-five is a sixty-seven percent increase in the text amendment of G F A space. I don't know if we want to ponder just doing a fifty percent increase, seeing as people are discussing whether we should do a hundred or one twenty-five, that would put us around like one twelve and a half, just throwing it out there.
Okay, terrific, well, okay, terrific, Diane, anything at this point?
Um, no.
Okay, terrific, Maureen?
You're out of the.
All right, I'm out of public hearing. Oh, I'm, you are staffed, I.
That's true.
I have that now, I really do, I need to know your something, it's like, okay, so, um.
Sorry, so the discussions we're having, are we looking at, it sounds like everybody's kind of on agreement around the one twenty-five, but are we still looking at it as the G F A or the patronage space? I'm looking at, honestly, I'm thinking of the patronage space.
Yeah, I'm kind of still thinking, as it was presented, they're happy with the G F A.
Okay.
And I think that just gives us a little bit, we can always address this, I think we should continue to look at parking, um.
I just want to make sure we were all on the same page, because we were going back and forth for quotes, I wanted to make sure we're all on the same page.
Because I think if we just had a patron, we might be reducing the parking. And if there are any that can happen, which this has presented to us, we can always address it again later.
I agree.
Well, that's, that's logical, how about that? Okay, Sam, and going on to Tim and Diane, uh, Peter, are you, are you good with that?
I'm good with that.
All right, terrific, so do we have a motion?
Making motion approved as written.
Okay, motion by Mr. Zigma, do we have a second? Second, second by Sandy Capola, for the discussion, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? So moved. Peter, can I hear your vote, I'm sorry? I'm sorry, Peter, was that an a or an n?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, we couldn't hear you, honey, sorry, okay. I had, next time, I'll handle it.
I don't, thank you so much.
All right, all right, so, um, yeah, I'm just trying to make it more, that's for sure. Okay, the last item really was the, uh, application for.
Can I just add that I have a client, I don't want to add it, go, standard comments as well.
All right, so, but we want to do the eight twenty-four.
Yeah.
Can, all right, so we probably have a motion to add the eight twenty-four to the agenda.
I'm making the motion to add the eight twenty-four to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Robin, do we have a second? I have a second, thank you, Mr. Hamel. Uh, further discussion on that, and all those in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, all right, so, um, we have the eight twenty-four, and the eight twenty-four is actually, we have a handout here, sorry, guys. No, we're out of public hearing, so now we're just adding this item to the agenda, so we're almost, almost done. All worried about those past people, oh, here. All right, all right, so.
I can give a quick summary of this, please, so the, um, town council on Tuesday, no, they voted to refer the matter of events, uh, to the town. Of one point oh one acres of map slot block one dash four, dash ten, dash one, north of West Lane, for the purposes of conservation area parking to the. Planning and zoning commission for review and recommendations for a section eight twenty-four of the Connecticut general statutes. And this refers to the parcel of land that, um, is currently, um. And this refers to the parcel of land that, um, is currently, um, at the southwest corner of Shuttle Meadow Country Club, right before the turn of West Lane, on into Big One, and near the trailhead at, um, going into Ragged Mountain Preserve. Um, the item for the town council was prepared, um, indicating that the area has been identified as one that has been, um, problematic with on-street parking or use of the trail. There's a very small area for cars to pull off, and truly they are somewhat of a pull-off spot instead of a parking area. And with the application for Shuttle Meadow Development Proposal, they have offered to the town to dedicate the one point one acres. This did go to the Conservation Commission, and the Conservation Commission endorsed the parking area as, um, something that would be beneficial to the town. And acres.
Alright.
Alright, does anyone else online need me to bring up the, uh, the, uh, G I S map to show you the area we're talking about?
No.
No. No.
Okay, I will add that the, um, applicant had done a preliminary layout of potential parking, and it would be, it's my understanding that it would be up to the town to eventually develop that parking area. Um, this is dedication of the land itself, um, unless otherwise we're down later in the process. But they set up a plan to show that approximately forty-five cars, including handicap spaces, would be able to be laid out, cars in adequate driveways and, and driving spaces, et cetera.
And so as far as surface coverage or anything else, we're not going to talk about that, we're just talking about the land.
About dedication of the land for the purpose of open space trailhead parking.
Okay, terrific, so commission, it is an eight twenty-four, so it's nine binding as far as we're concerned, but the council is looking for our blessing or condemnation?
Make a motion to approve.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Jersey, we have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Sandy Capola, further discussion, all those in favor, aye? Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, no one opposed, alright, great, so we're sending it back to the council. Alright, terrific, and then just some, um, uh, just quick, um, items that we wanted to cover. Um, there is a, a planning and zoning association, I guess, meeting at the Aquaturf, which is on the twenty-fourth, which is last Thursday of the month. It's something that, um, they do, I've had it done a couple of years, but they do it for all the active members, we usually have a guest speaker, meal, cash bar. Um, I will tell you that it's nice affair, it usually starts around, what, five thirty or something like that, I think the place opens. So if you want to go, I am going to attend this meeting because we haven't been to it in a long time. Um, if you want to attend, I think it's great, it's a great opportunity. Um, it's filled with planning and zoning people, um, some people you want to see again, some people you won't, that's okay. So please let Lori know.
We, Fran and I are keeping and running Cali's in our office, we do have to get, uh, the reservation, uh, shored up and sent out to them this coming week, so if, um, everybody could let me know by the next several days, by Tuesday, Wednesday of next week, that would be great, um, sooner the better. Um, make sure we got the adequate funds, um, there, I understand that they're working on, um, a portion of it being counted towards the mark, the now, the now requirement of commissioners having professional development and hours, so there will be a speaker now, and, and, uh, I believe it will, I have every read the invitation, but I'm sure that's what I read on the invitation when it came in, um, so that is a consideration as well.
Okay.
And the town does, did reserve funds for a certain number of members, then we can probably find one for everyone.
Alright, so, um, uh, so the invitation is to all, it's open to all, playing, planning, zoning, including the alternate. So please, guys, if you, if you have a chance, think about it, and if you can go, please let Lori know because we need to get that head count, alrighty, terrific, and I think, I think that was the end of, okay, yeah, you are, you had something else?
So I have two signs I wanted to ask you about because they're both in the design district. And, uh, I think those are, so, our, our code center has been acting up, so I need.
What is our, is it Farmington Avenue or?
Farmington, so the Farmington Avenue Design District includes Main Street, Ubrith Road, closer Mill Street, the, this side of, um, from Turnpike Mill Street, um, uh, west, a portion of western square, then the Berlin Turnpike Designs, um, sign guidelines. Do that, commercial corridor, along with, with law. Um, the, this is for three fifty-nine Main Street, um, it's a small building that has, um, I'm sorry, I really thought I pulled it off the printer, um, has to have a doctor's office in it, an optometrist's office. The proposal is for a, uh, a, a single sign to go up in the peak of the building, and I'm going to pull up a picture of the building so that you can see that. As soon as I can, give me one second. Sorry.
Good night all.
When I pull these up downstairs, and I found they don't stay on my screen, and I have to start over up here. They used, there was a while they came across and now they don't. So I don't know if everyone can see this, oh, I know online they can't, wait a minute, I actually, hold on a second.
Uh, bring Mr. Derry. Charlie, you came up looking nice, what's happening there?
I have too much blue on the top. He was only supposed to do that one panel, which is another thing.
So this is one of the ones we have now, they are looking, he's, he's going to be, um, providing information that he'll take down the awning and the sign here. This is a sign that has the address on it and just a small sign that says the optometrist's number, so it's name, so it probably will be allowed to stay under the two square feet of directory next to the door, but he's looking to put a non-illuminated sign for the vision care center that will be going in up here. It's a aluminum tubing sign with decorated vinyl printed face. And, so it meant nothing to me as well, so they just described that they wrap the, the vinyl to make it stand off the wall of it, and that's where it's tubing, it is not internally illuminated, it's not, um, it's just a sign, but appropriate, it assigns appropriate there, and they'll have the numbers here. They, they will put the street number, here, we had that discussion with the fire marshal today, the building next door. Um, does have, no, the one on the other side, the one going towards very clean, does have the street numbers in the cable end right there, in the, over the door, and intends to mimic that for health and safety, but that doesn't count as signage anyway. Um, and if you want to see the sign, I can pull it up, I mean, they'll take you in.
Pete, I have no problem with that.
So this is the sign, it's taking a minute to load, but that's the sign, what the sign will look like.
Visionary eye care, oh, that's going to look pretty, I'm going to sign with that one eye staring. I don't know, I don't know, I saw like.
Psychic greetings as well.
Yeah, you know, you know, I know.
I know, I know. It's a psychic.
Uh, I don't know, but I, you know, what is it, om or something, it has one, I don't know.
So I don't see, you know.
You're almost like.
Looking very slowly. Did you guys see that, uh?
Diane, you see that? Yes. Bet you can, she's not really.
I thought there was another view as well. There it is.
No, it's, uh, it's just. Looks like a little tornado.
I, I just didn't like it because it kind of creeped me out.
So, I don't know if you can still see it, it's a little difficult because of the size in this program.
Oh, it's not making me all warm and cozy.
I don't know, yeah, but.
Scott's going to shake the, uh.
Aggressiveness. Or, or direction.
Maybe a more natural eye and now something so abstract.
Yeah, I think it's the logo, I think that's the logo of the company.
Can we not have a green eye?
It'd be blue to enter it clean. Well, if that's, if they read the, uh, if they read that game one, it might look better with the white, white.
Uh, how's it going to be lit?
Uh, it's not really lit at all.
No.
Not illuminated, he, he only got yesterday.
Yeah, wouldn't it be better just to have it on a post hanging on, so, no, I mean, uh, oh, I think it's better on the building because maybe people, I don't know, people, that's a short little street.
I can't see it.
No, that's why you need his help. I, I don't, uh.
I'm not thrilled with it, but if it's their logo, it's going to change the business logo.
Well, can you shake him down?
You gotta tell me, that's terrible.
That's, yeah, I just.
It's a white background, Lori?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sorry.
Can it, oh. Uh, did economic development see this?
No, these aren't, these aren't the side applications any longer, so these things don't go through them anymore. It's not part of the funding, this is now just regular design guidelines, um, village nature, et cetera.
I'd always prefer that, like the traditional reading, the post.
Yeah.
Unless he, he does it.
Yeah.
Yeah, can we? Can we see what other options are available?
And I hate being critical over somebody's silly signs, but I just stick out like a sore thumb.
It's a good thing, maybe, because people will find it.
Especially if you're in trouble.
I'm going to try to be business friendly, I just wanted to compliment what's already there.
Kind of doesn't match.
And that's the thing, that's.
It's, it's hard to try and make.
Maybe it'd be better if you had like false lashes or something.
Or use a different background.
Anyone online have any comment?
Uh.
If they tried a different background color, it might not be as.
Standing, I don't know, but what other background, background color can you have?
That'd be like, because it's bigger than black, right? Also, maybe it's for being, for.
Yeah, I know, we could be, we could be out having a toast to the.
Peter, what were you talking?
One, I hate it, but two, um, maybe, uh, maybe just like, what about like wooden lettering without the logo, without the, uh, the I or the squid or whatever it is, and just like the plain lettering of the business itself? I don't think the, I don't think the logo blends in at all.
Well, yeah, I think you're agreeing to what we're saying up here, um, and it's not a squid it's supposed to be.
It almost feels like zilt that belongs in a dumpster area.
I'm getting punched in the flowers, Lee.
Oh, God.
Alright, Diane?
I, I personally think it's an ugly sign, uh, again, but, uh, the, and they got to look around the neighborhood, and we want to standardize these signs because it's the downtown district. Uh, we did it on, uh, the jewelry store dynasty and the one across the street. We matched those signs, uh, you know, and, 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 uh, I think, you know, we got to look at signs. I mean, can they match it towards, uh, the, whatever that coffee shop next door is? I know, uh, uh, yeah, you know, it just, this, it's way out, and, and we, it's not the flavor of downtown that we're looking for in our designer review.
Probably better, I mean, it doesn't, it, it wouldn't bother me so much having the lettering, you know, art like that, but, um, I just think, I think it's the logo that throws everything off of that area of, of town.
Okay, so I think it's a consensus to, point it back to the, yeah, alright, that's very good direction. Peter Squid wins. Alright, and then followed, followed by a second for the tornado that Diane Jersey said.
I have a second sign as well.
Another sign, guys.
Actually, it just looks, a sign issue, um, we.
Can we eliminate this stupid, these stupid, this thing? I, I don't want all I get, because every time I move, it just creeps down, like, this program is not like working quickly.
Well, I have eight twenty G, I'll do that.
Yeah, eight twenty-four?
Yeah.
Tonight? What time is it?
Wrapping them tonight and going to get like, um, for dinner.
Alright, five o'clock for a house.
This is for the Dunkin' Donuts on Farmington Avenue, they're upgrading their signs to the new logo, which is Dunkin'.
Dunkin's.
We don't have more drunkin'. Someone dons, now it's just Dunkin'.
No, this is a farm, if.
They still sell them, it's just not part of the name anymore.
We'll see if this loan, if I'll go to my email to, what are these pictures?
You know, it's just new work and strategy, trying to be more healthy, hence the avocado toast and all that stuff.
Avocado.
I don't want healthy garbage.
Yeah, hold on, there we go. So, on their site, they'll be replacing. They'll be replacing the directional signs and the front sign with the new logo. They are proposing, uh, the message board, the order board.
Yeah.
One, two, move it back from this location, everybody can see this, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, now I'm sure I'm sharing the right thing. Um, from the, we believe the, the logo board is right now, right here, moving it back to here, adding a canopy over it, and it'll be, like, it'll have like two boards, I think that one might already have two boards, and adding a height bar over here, and okay. So those were my concerns, was they're adding, you know, to add into the message board and what the message board will be, its volume is increasing, um, as well as adding this other sign, or, or height limit, so, this is what it's going to look like, you know, that's what they've been, you know, for directional signs.
Hmm.
That they're just, so those are, those are proof, we don't really have much to say about that.
Yeah.
Sign will be now, they're not illuminated, they're illuminated from, um, from above, so therefore the white background doesn't have that one-third white requirement in the zoning regulations. Um, and it is a case only that they're doing.
Okay.
Um, of course, if you have comments, you can make comments, I don't want to. Um, whereas if you have comments, you can make comments, I don't want to say that, you know.
The con, the comment that I have is actually where they're going to put that order squat box, is that that's a very tight corner, I don't know, I, I utilize that work, and it's really, I mean, you can barely get your, your cars ass around the corner, and, you know, now you're getting the squat box right there, so people are really going to be screaming, you know, to get their order placed, and I'm not sure that that's the best place for it. I like the idea of canopy. No, no. Uh, windows down, it would be at least dry.
So, again, that, that's what this is, this is the canopy sign, well, I'll go back to the overhead light, um, sign, but this is the canopy. I do have a photograph of it that, sure, with you guys, if everybody's patient, I'll bring it up on the screen. Direct from the side, it'll take me several more minutes.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with that.
These are photographs of the way that two.
I agree, I'm okay with everything, but I do think the location where it's currently situated.
It's going to be a little tight.
It should not go that way, okay, I, you know, that actually came to light today when I asked him for more information, that's when I got the information that that was, I thought it was, but, I didn't think it was in the same position, and had pulled an old site plan in. The old site plan shows where the.
You can tell it's frequent customers.
There's many, many ways.
Yeah.
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 I mean, the queue was really tough coming off Farmington Avenue, when that place gets busy, that line is actually on the street, it's dangerous.
That turn in the back there, uh, the turn lane is very sharp, uh, and if you put it back towards the turn lane, the sign, uh, basically like my pickup truck with a foot box on there, I'm not going to be able to get squared up on that sign.
Yeah, well, I'll watch you drive that Daco bus, we didn't really see that.
No, twelve feet, I'd take that sign off, it's nine.
No, you just park on the street, okay.
I'd be comfortable giving them the blessing as long as they keep it, as far as, as far as.
Yeah, I think that, I, I'm, and you just tell them that, just looking at it really, you know, a lot of us have been there, and it's just a real tight turn. It's even, you know, I mean, I don't know, because you got the dumpster there, so you can't really swing out, because if you try to swing out, you got traffic that's rolling around.
Yeah.
I was just going to say, plus the people trying to go around and get out.
Yeah, because they decided, well, I forgot my stuff, or I can't wait, yeah.
I think if they keep it where it is, and then just add the canopy and redo their boards, I think, that, you know, I think we're all good with that.
Yeah.
So, let me get to that there.
I am, Peter, do you have any comments on that?
Commissioners, they customers.
That's right.
I have a problem, I have a problem with that drive-through on top of that pole there. Uh, that's added another sign.
It's just like order goes straight.
I know, I mean, it's pretty much just.
This picture here is, you got the clearance sign nine feet hanging down, plus a drive-through sign, that's an extra sign. Doesn't say that it's clearance sign, this is, it's, oh, here's the drive-through, uh, and, you know, it's extra sign for signage, and, uh, they already got more signage on that building than we allowed, don't they, Maury?
No, they actually don't, because they don't have a, a window sign, so they only try to, uh, walk sign, they only have, uh, a free standing sign out front, the other signs are directional signage, and those are allowed up to two square. So, this one, um, could be considered a directional sign, that's actually a clarification, I was looking for the question to make, whether you would consider that an advertising sign or a directional sign. If it is directional, it would have to be kept up under two square feet, I, I mean, I did that calculation, but, you know, I got off on a different tangent, um, the other day, and, I don't know, I could read it. It's at three square feet, it seems, so it probably would have to be reduced, the drive-through itself would have to come down to maximum of two square feet.
Hmm, I think if they do that, that'd be okay. Yeah.
I don't mind them having that up there.
Yeah.
It's, and I think delineates the two areas too, by having that. We don't need those people who, oh, instead of standing in the parking space to get them, so, uh, so that might help.
Okay, did you get what you needed from that?
Yeah, so basically they're all right, they'll move the, move the, move the, move the, tell them they can add the canopy, design, and everybody's in consensus with us.
Yeah, everyone's happy with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Don't forget the, uh, Board of, how's your planning, planning, conservation development meeting on Monday night?
Okay.
Alright, any, uh, on that mission, and we'll talk to you.
Monday night?
See if you want to do that, Monday night. Okay, six o'clock.
Board of Edum.
Yeah, the Board of Edum, that's way too big a room.
Yeah. Well, it's going to be with, um.
Yeah, but last time we only had, yeah, we only had four people.
It's a nice.
I don't know who's coming in.
It's six. Six, it says six to ten.
It says six to ten, but it's usually six to eight, because the consultant only, it's a two-hour meeting, it doesn't stay up all. Uh, uh, Francisco, who is head of the consultants firm that's hired in the plant of conservation development.
Or.
Need a motion to, so, yes. Motion, who made the motion, Scott Hamel, and, uh, second was Rogan, we have a motion adjourned, it's about nine twelve in the evening. Hey, nine twelve, that's good, alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, good night, everyone, and.
Good night.
Good night.
Happy St. Patrick's Day, happy St. Patrick's Day.
I'm going, I don't know if that means anything.
Oh, go, especially if you get our credits.
Yeah, you get, you get training products, then you get a free meal, but it is a cash bar.
What time is the Aquaturf, uh, thing?
I think it's six or five.
I think you can get in at five.
We can get it at five.
Social hour registration, six o'clock dinner, seven fifteen awards, eight o'clock, the topic.
Okay, thank you.
And so if anybody, um, has not gotten an award for, I believe it's twelve and twenty-four, or twenty-five years of service, and you believe you've hit them, hit one of those, please let me know, I have last data on this question.
I don't know if I get twenty-five.
Well, we'll try to, we'll try to look into it.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, my fifteen year didn't happen when, when it's supposed to, so I know it's a lot more than.
Okay.